Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this morning on October the 20th at 11:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols. Teri?
Good morning. Thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jelena Grande. Jelena Grande.
She is here in chat but does not have a working microphone at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Perry. Pam Haynes.
Here.
And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We do have Coram President Haynes.
Thank you. And I apologize for not giving my colleagues a heads up, but I'm gonna call on our Vice President to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Sure thing. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We are now going to the discussion of the order of the agenda. So does anyone have any objections to the agenda as it stands? I don't see any hands raised. Would that be correct? Doesn't look like it.
I don't see any either.
All right, I appreciate that. So I'm gonna give a very short president's report. As many of you know, not only do I serve on the Board of Governors and on the Calbright Board of Trustees, I also serve as a longstanding and elected member of a community college district here in Sacramento, Los Rios Community College District, which gives me at least a bird's eye view of a lot of issues that not only Calbright, but the entire system is facing on an ongoing basis. And I want to talk about that just a wee bit. Every college in this system is facing enrollment challenges for any number of reasons. Every college, not only in this system but across this nation, is dealing with enrollment challenges of one sort or another. And, you know, I listened to a webinar this morning. I've listened to several of them. Our board at Los Rios is continually asking the question, what are we doing about enrollment? Can we get our students back? Have we pulled out every stop? And what I would say is, for the most part, the answer is yes. However, we're all at very different stages of that piece. And Calbright is now, is no exception to that. And one of the questions that I asked myself, can belonging live in an online environment? And my answer actually was yes. And I'll use Calbright as an example of that. I think Calbright's mission has been to focus in on all of those students who have, and adults who have been left behind. Every single college, not only in this state and across the nation, is looking at that same question. And part of that is, in what ways are we touching our students? And a touch doesn't necessarily mean a physical touch. It can be an electronic touch. And one of the comments that one of the presidents made this morning was, you know, emails are wonderful, but what he has found, and I suspect others have found, and I know that Calbright has found, is an email needs some other kinds of things. And one of the things that they mentioned was embedding a video within the email. And that when one did that, 50% higher success rate in touching the student. Calbright has gone, for the last two years, has continually, on an ongoing basis, tried to touch our students electronically. They've tried to figure out how to do hybrid touches. Some of that has been difficult given COVID. But it, as part of its main strategies, is how do we engage students to help them persist? And so, and that word came up a lot this morning. It continues to come up, I suspect, in all 115 other colleges, including the 116th College, which is Calbright. The things that I think we've tried to keep in mind at Calbright, and I think everyone is trying to keep in mind, is how do we keep students engaged? How do we remove student frictions? We talk about that a lot at Calbright. What are the stumbling blocks that will keep our students on a pathway? And it is challenging for this group of students. Something else that came up this morning was that we are trying to design and continually to design with the student in mind. That is the mantra of Calbright. It has been changing over the last two years. Anything that gets in the way of engaging students. And the other thing that came up and has come up is, are we meeting students where they are? Everybody is saying the same thing. Calbright is no exception. It is doing that on a daily basis. And I think it's critically important to understand that we talk about the pandemic and we talk about all of those things that act as barriers. But that's only one thing that acts as a barrier. We are dealing with some of the most challenged Californians in the state who don't only have that, but many of them are parents. Many of them have had a difficult time in the educational system. Many of them are low income and have been impacted even before the pandemic about around the role of work in their lives. And by that, they've had to focus on not just one job, but two jobs to make ends meet. Not just two jobs sometimes, but three jobs to make ends meet. And so, I'm hoping that as we talk about the challenges that we have around one specific area, right now, we're talking about enrollment. But enrollment is critical to every single institution in this nation. The statistics are in, the data is in. Folks are losing students. And they're losing students for all of these other reasons. And so, I'll close with that I am a person that sees the glass as half-full. I'm gonna always, there's been times when I wanted to gravitate to it being half-empty, but I will not do that. I believe that where there are good people and people who care, we will find the solutions. The way we find them is to find them together. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to move to our CEO report. President Minion.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. Today, following Pam's queue, I'd like to share with you an update regarding some of Calbright's priorities through the end of this year. And in the coming months, this is one of many, we're gonna continue to dive deeper with the board in key areas of our efforts. And since some of this information's gonna be a little bit heavy on stats and figures, I created a few slides just to guide my remarks. Next slide, please. As Pam mentioned, we are in a very important moment as Calbright continues to evolve and grow and to identify the best strategies to deliver against the goals and objectives that are set forth in the board-approved strategic vision. A critical component of our long-term success is gonna be focused on the actions that we take now and through the end of the year. And that's gonna be to expand our operational capacity and to build out teams across the organization. Fundamentally, Calbright requires a very different relationship with our students than we find at a traditional college. And our organizational structure is gonna have to reflect that. Our learners are parents and caregivers. Many of them are working multiple jobs, as Pam mentioned, struggling with these kind of twin crises of economic hardship and the global pandemic. We aren't just taking in-person classroom curriculum and putting it online, but instead, really developing entirely new programs and support systems that are designed specifically for our students' critical needs. And in order to really continue and to foster an environment that centers on those needs, we're gonna need to let our product, which is our student experience, really lead the way. So today, we're gonna be asking for the board to approve eight new positions on our technology team to really position the college to meet the next stage of our development. These positions include a Chief Product Officer, who will fill the role formerly held by Calbright's Chief Technology Officer, and a Vice President of Engineering, who will lead the team of technical experts in supporting our students, faculty, and staff in its execution. In addition to these new roles, the search is currently underway for a new Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, and several new Student Support roles are posted with the intention of bringing candidates to the board for approval in the coming months. Next slide. As the slide says, it is critical that Calbright put itself in a position to be ready to grow with an attention to quality and to do so while strengthening both our products alongside our college's core functions. We have to build the organization now that reinforces our structural framework so that we're strong in the years ahead, but that we're able to also accelerate the pace of our progress implementing new and responsive programs and also developing additional mechanisms for high-quality growth. The conditions for our success as a college also rests within the people that are in our organization today. Those are the folks who are tirelessly dedicating themselves to our mission and to our students, are very committed leaders, faculty, and staff. And a key focus of our efforts to the end of this year is also gonna be on strengthening the way we work collaboratively together as an organization, not just our structure, but also our culture. And I similarly look forward to our new labor partner, CSEA, to further strengthen our efforts to provide educational opportunities for California's adult learners. Next slide. So I'm gonna shift a little bit to talk about Calbright's enrollments as a part of a regular cadence of updates around focused areas for the college that represent our development, but also our progress. As a part of our mission to provide flexible programs and to serve populations of Californians who lack access to traditional forms of education, when Calbright initially began, we began enrolling students with no defined terms or timeframes in which learners needed to complete course material or demonstrate progress. While this is very aligned with a flexible model of education that was envisioned for the college, we pretty quickly realized that there was a critical need to ensure that we were also supporting not just enrollments, but also persistence. And an important step in that effort was really determining and formalizing enrollment protocols and policies. You know, so how do we balance our learner needs for flexible pacing with a clear structure for determining enrollment status? So in July of 2020, we began implementing six-month terms for our new students. You know, and that shift in policy actually made us have to think about how to best support existing students through that transition and really to do so with the grace and the deference that the moment required. From July 2020 to July 2021, during the summer and winter waves of the COVID-19 pandemic, the team at Calbright conducted a college-wide outreach campaign to alert students who enrolled prior to the new policy implementation. You know, the weight of this pandemic, as Pam mentioned, was disproportionately carried by the communities we were seeking to serve and that were in our institutions. And knowing that, when we engage with our students, it was critical that our student success team not only share information about the new enrollment policy, but actually be in listening mode. Listen to students' stories and how they were experiencing the effects of the pandemic. Students that conveyed to us that they wanted to reengage with their programs dedicated more time to the material and were placed in new six-month terms. And students who did not respond or wish to continue were withdrawn. This six-month term timeframe, for point of reference, aligns with other competency-based higher education models and also with the U.S. Department of Education's federal financial aid rules. But more importantly than those two things, it's actually that it provides the flexibility our students need to accommodate their lives and their schedules and also creates a baseline for us as an institution through which we can continue to learn from and identify improvements to our student support services. To remain actively enrolled at the end of a term or to move to a new term, students have to be making progress in their program as determined by their faculty instructor. This is monitored weekly by faculty who submit grades into a rubric that accounts not only for students' progress within the course, but also for their activity within the learning platform. So it provides a much more holistic picture of student engagement and an opportunity to identify students who may need assistance or really to celebrate and congratulate those students achieving milestones. Accompanying that new enrollment framework is a policy around provisional enrollment, which was implemented to really kind of mirror the census timeline across the community college system and at other institutions of higher education. While it was our goal for all of our students, sorry, students who enroll at Calbright begin as provisionally enrolled for the first 30 days. And as soon as they complete a module in their course, they move into what we call actively enrolled for the remainder of their six-month term. And so while it's been our goal for all students to succeed, some who enroll don't end up engaging with the program. And if they don't make progress within the first 30 days, they may be withdrawn. In addition, students who make progress in one term and then become inactive in another ensuing term could also be withdrawn. To help identify these students before they drop out or stop out, our student success team, along with our faculty, proactively reach out to our students to offer support in order to serve whatever the challenge might be, whether it's a possible technology issue or a difficulty in understanding a particular component of the curriculum. Our students come to Calbright with these exceptional stories and really with these mixed experiences with education. A lot of them don't feel comfortable asking for help or attending a meeting with a faculty member. And so, the team focuses on identifying and reaching out to students, not just those who have recently enrolled or whose terms are coming to an end, but all students. And that's what's been really critical to fostering an environment where they feel both comfortable and valued, to really enable the conditions of learning to occur. I plan in the coming months to provide a more detailed presentation to share more about the proactive outreach and the exceptional work happening in the success team. Next slide. Because we don't have an institution-driven academic calendar, Calbright's enrollment numbers change daily as new students enroll, others withdraw, either due to their own desire or the administrative procedures that we have set up. As of early October, in Calbright's enrollment was 518 students. This does not include students who are provisionally enrolled. Three-quarters of these students have completed what Calbright calls an SAA or a substantive academic activity in the past 180 days. This could include completing a module or taking a quiz or assessment, for example. And an even larger percentage of our students are engaged in one way or another with their course material, not necessarily with their course material in the past 100 days, but they've completed what we call an academic activity. So it doesn't rise to the level of an SAA or substantive academic activity, but it shows that they're engaged with the material. This could include things like completing a part of a multi-part module or meeting with a tutor or counselor. Next slide. Calbright has 52 starts of term and 52 ends of term every year, which means our enrollment management process, in addition, in contrast to other institutions, is an ongoing process. So a large number of our students transitioned into six-month terms in the spring of 2021. So we'll see for those students, their terms coming to an end in the next few months. So of the roughly 120 students enrolled at Calbright who have not completed a substantive academic activity in the past 180 days, we'll see about 100 of them before the end of the year reach a conclusion in their terms. So that includes, you know, 45 students in October 20, and November 30, and December. And our faculty and success team will continue to reach out to these students to offer help and support if they don't reengage. But however, if they don't reengage, they may be withdrawn from the college as a part of standard end-of-term procedures. Next slide. Part of why I wanted to share this level of detail is because it actually illustrates the progress that we've made in institutionalizing policies that, going forward, will help us focus our efforts in support of student engagement and persistence. Not only, we engage students not only at the start or end of their terms, but within and across their academic journey. And also because what we have done here is we've built this. We have built and learned over the past year to be instructive to the higher education sector about the challenges in serving non-traditional students. And to provide some context around these numbers, Calbright was created to serve adult Californians who lack traditional forms of education and job training, specifically those populations overrepresented in statistics like unemployment, underemployment, COVID-19 rates, but underrepresented in higher education. And we've made tremendous progress in creating and refining our operations to support our students to deliver high-quality online programs. But it's important to remember, this is a challenge that no institution of higher education has solved for yet. Nationally, more than half of adult learners who were enrolled in higher education in the fall of 2019 were not enrolled come fall of 2020. This trend continues for part-time students at public two-year institutions, and it's even more pronounced in the for-profit institutional sector. So success for Calbright's focused demographic of students is really a very complex equation. And solving it requires us to have the flexibility to build and iterate new systems and to try things while also constantly evaluating and refining and improving those systems to reflect the new data and learning. This takes time, but it also takes a lot of sweat equity. Part of Calbright's role within the state's community college system is gonna be for this space for R and D to occur so it can inform and benefit efforts to scale system-wide efforts around approaches like competency-based education for the benefit of our adult learners. We're on that kind of leading edge of innovation in the public higher education sector. And we're gonna continue to share more, both about the complexity and about what we're learning in serving underserved populations in an effort to help open the doors of opportunity for more students across the state. So I'll stop there and just want to say thank you to the board. And I look forward to continuing this conversation in the coming months.
Thank you so much for that report. It was very helpful. We're now gonna move into closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. The first one is a conference with labor negotiators. And the second item is a conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. So if we can all meet in that closed session, I'll see you on the other side. So we're back in open session. The board did not take any actions during closed session. And as a result, there is no report out of closed session. So we're gonna now move to our consent agenda. So do any employees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or for a separate vote? Is there any public comment on any of the items?
Sorry, President Haynes, I am trying to open my Q and A, and for some reason, it's not opening.
Well, we can come back to it if there's somebody who wants to speak on it. So may I get a motion to approve the consent item?
I'm sorry, I just have one question.
Yes, yes, Tom.
I guess I'd like an explanation of the term "product" in these job descriptions because it's not, I mean, I don't know for sure, but it doesn't seem like it's a job title that's generally used by community colleges. And I saw in your earlier presentation, you kind of tried to define it as student experience. And I just wouldn't want it to cause any concern out there, I guess, to use the term "product." And so I'd just like to understand the thinking behind that.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a very intentional decision. It is not something that we currently see in the community colleges. It is something that is an orientation for organizations whose primary delivery mechanism has to be digital systems technology. So it is the difference between having a technology division within a college and having an end-to-end delivery of a student experience that requires careful consideration and coordination of all of the different programmatic offices and stakeholders and all those things, but to really have coherent learning design, coherent services design to support our students. So what we're seeing is in folks who are in the online space, including in higher education, an increasing move towards understanding how to build that cohesion across what individual students have to experience. And so, it's really a step ahead, frankly, of where institutions who might have started online work 20 years ago would have been. So it is the thing that allows for us to address many of the pain points that are typically experienced between a technology siloed division within an institution and what's sort of needed to make sure that all of our systems, everything from our enrollment processes to our learning interactions to our services design in terms of student interventions, has the same look and the feel, the same cohesion that folks need to not have, you know, a continuous disruption in the level of quality they're experiencing in that digital environment.
And what I would add to that, Tom, is that every one of our colleges is trying to figure this out. They're not using the same language, but it is, how do they design with a student in mind? And how do they break down the barriers? And, but it comes out as language of, how do we make certain that our immigrant programs, our 540 students, our homeless students, our students who need mental health, how do we make certain that there's a one-stop? And that's a design, that's a design discussion that's happening. How do you break down all those barriers? So I suspect that the colleges will be moving more toward that language as they move forward. Because when they do that, they're not only going to the constituency groups, they are going to the tech folks to figure out how to do some of this stuff. And part of it is doing it online in a way that they've never done before, but absolutely realize now as a result of the environments around the pandemic and around the move of our students into online. How do they get services? And how do they get that engagement in the same way or even in a better way relative to how does that design online?
I'll add one more thing, which is the language is important in terms of the term and the position, even though it will be pioneering with respect to what we see currently in the system and across many other higher institutions whose primary mechanism is not digital delivery because we are recruiting for a particular set of skills related to this position in terms of the talent marketplace and on the technology side itself. And so, part of the reason that we will see, these are not education roles, these are technology roles, and they're technology roles that are putting a foot forward on the type of student experience that we need to deliver to make sure that we can drive the outcomes that we're seeking to drive in terms of supportive completion, but also labor market transition. So for us, retitling may solve some optics, questions, or concerns on the higher ed side of things. It makes it tremendously difficult for us to recruit the actual skills and talent needed in the organization to do this delivery.
Okay, thanks.
But thank you for that question, Tom. I think it answered, that question helped to answer a lot of questions that a lot of people have. So that was helpful. I don't see any other hands raised. So can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar or agenda?
I'll move, this is Aguinaldo.
Moved by Aguinaldo. A second for this item.
Second.
A second by Epstein. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Haynes. And before you go on to the next Motion carries President Haines, and before you go on to the next item, I do have a written question from the public, not relating to the consent agenda, though. Calbright's enrollment criteria of a six-month grace period before dropping is abnormal to the community college system that typically drops inactive students within 30 days. No one is completing any program with little progress every six months. It seems to be a deceptive accounting tactic to inflate enrollment numbers and allocate more funding based on unfaithful reporting. Why does Calbright require six times the duration of other CCs to determine a student as inactive, and how is Calbright addressing the obvious student engagement issue?
Madam President, can I just take a personal privilege here and make a comment on the question before Ajita responds, if she wants to?
Well, but first, um, oh, so I guess I need, I need clarification, since this was not part, so this is not a question relative to that portion of the agenda. I need to make, to make certain that we can, that we can respond. So can I get, because usually we don't on certain items. So we, we have one of our lawyers can, relative to the ability to respond.
So it's a matter of personal privilege. If you were to grant Vice President Costa's request for personal privilege, there is an opportunity to respond. There is no requirement, but if the, if a sitting member of the body requests to respond, that is your personal discretion, Madam President.
Then, then I will, I will, I will defer to having the Vice President respond.
Well, the only thing I would say is that the context of the question is exactly right. Calbright is abnormal in the community college system, and it was designed to be distinctly different. And so, you know, these policies are going to be distinguished from our brother and sister districts.
Thank you for that. I, I think that, I'll let that comment stand in response. We're now going to move to our action items. The first one is 4.1 was, which is a resolution to adopt procurement card, adopt the procurement card program manual, and to authorize issuance of additional Cal cards. And we have our fiscal financial officer, Jeff, would you please present on this item?
Yes, Madam President, Madam Vice President, good morning. Before you is on 4.1, seeking your approval on Resolution 21, or 2021-08, on Calbright's procurement card program manual governing the use of credit cards by Calbright College. And it is seeking the committee, as you recall, on June 17th of 2020, the Board of Trustees, Executive Committee directed the Calbright administration to develop policies and training associated with use of credit cards. And then, of course, this year, on September 20th, the, the Board of Trustees, at the Board of Trustees meeting, the board adopted Resolution 21, 2021-06, authorizing the use of Cal cards for myself, your chief financial administrative officer, to, I was issued a credit card, but also giving direction to come back to you with a credit card policy, and that is what is before you today. We also have before you the proposal to issue additional credit cards to select members of your staff, which are delineated to you in the item below. You will see each one of those select staff specifically delineated, and the reasons therefore for each one of those staff, your president and CEO, chief of staff, chief product officer, vice president, human resources, and board liaison, and the reasons set forth for each in the background before you. Additionally, in the, in the body of the, of the document before you, you'll see the reasons or the, the amounts suggested for each of them, and I can provide that to you if you'd like, suggested what, the reason, the suggested reasons for each of those amounts. Additionally, procurement card manual is attached to resolution as Exhibit A. This is before you for your approval. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from our board members? I do not see any hands raised. Am I correct? I don't have everyone on my, on my screen.
You are correct, President Haines, and there is no public comment.
Thank you for that. Then can I get a motion to approve?
Also move.
And can I get a second?
I'll second, Rawlings.
So Perry moves and Rawlings second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Hildegard Agnaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Haines.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4.2, this is an addendum to the professional services agreement with Stan McKnight and Associates, Inc. Jeff Bell, our chief financial and administrative officer, is going to present on this item.
Yes, Madam President, thanks again. This seeks approval of an addendum to the professional services agreement with Stan McKnight and Associates, seeking determined agreement through June 30th of next year. This agreement would provide an additional $60,200 to complete work complying with the board's policy of 7130, requiring salary schedules, compensation, and benefits for all classes of employees at Calbright. It would essentially bring the total value of the addendum to $139,300. Just by way of background, since August 21, 2021 of this year, we've retained Stan McKnight and Associates to develop salary schedules for Calbright's confidential administrative, professional, and management executive jobs, and they presented revised analysis on the faculty's salary schedule for further board input in October of 2020. As you may recall, they're providing additional work to us at this time, and there'll be additional presentations by Stan McKnight and Associates in your presentation this morning.
Thank you. Any trustee discussion, any board member discussion? I don't see any hands raised. If that's correct, then I want to then go to find out if there's any public discussion or comment, I should say.
There is no public comment, President Haines.
All right, then can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve, Rawlings.
Rawlings approves, motion to approve, sorry. And can I get a second?
Second.
Epstein is, is a second on that motion. Then can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Hildegard actually had to drop off the call.
Correct.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Haines.
Thank you. Then we're going to go to item 4.3, which is an addendum to the professional services agreement for Sacramento Advocates, and we have Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations, presenting on this item. Welcome, Jenny.
Good morning, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and Board of Trustees, Jenny Johnson, BP of Government Relations. This item seeks approval of an addenda to the professional services agreement with Sacramento Advocates, our lobbying firm, to extend the term of the agreement through March 14th of next year, and to increase the total value of the agreement by an additional $40,000. As you recall, we've been working with Sacramento Advocates for a couple of years, and we're not increasing the amount per month, but there was a shortfall from the original agreement. So this addendum corrects that and makes them whole, so that we continue the work going forward. Happy to answer any questions, of course.
Do we have any questions from our, our board members, our executive committee members? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item, President Haines, but we do have a new comment in regards to item 3.3, when you are finished with this item.
3.3, oh, all right, thank you. Then can, can I get a motion to approve 4.3?
They moved.
Epstein moves, can I get a second?
I'll second, Costa.
Costa seconds. Then can we get a roll call vote on it?
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Haines.
Thank you. So let's go back to, it was a, a, a comment on, in the consent on item 3.3 personnel issues or items.
Yes, correct. Calbright has had a high turnover of employees in the last few months. Prior to Jesse Lawson resigning, he sent a message indicating that Calbright College was misrepresented in their actual enrollment. For example, in the college's milestone report, 65 medical code-in-students were reported, but in actuality, 43% have not completed any substantive academic activity in more than 90 days, yet they are not dropped. The college is losing many passionate public service works due to these discrepancies in manipulation tactics. When will Calbright College's leadership uphold their public duty to be transparent with the California taxpayers and publicly address the enrollment discrepancies, other than the fact that leadership believes Calbright is unique and enrollment rules can be adjusted to fill their, fit their needs?
Thank you. Moving on to item 4.4 in the action agenda, this is on instructional design, and we have Marissa Bold, who is chief of program operations. Marissa?
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and member of the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you an instructional design professional services agreement for your review and approval. This is the second part of a topic presented to the board at September, in September, and I'll share similar information, so it may be a tad repetitive, but wanted to be sure to share the context for this item as well. The agreement we're presenting today is for one of the two selected vendors following a request for proposal or RFP process for instructional design. The agreement provides needed professional services for the college while we're building many new instructional courses and pathways. The cross-functional evaluation committee included representation from faculty, subject matter experts, and others across instruction, success, and technology teams. And after a multi-phased process, two vendors, MPS and O'Donnell Learn, received the highest scores and were found to be the best fit for Calbright's needs. As a result, the evaluation committee recommended a split award to MPS and O'Donnell Learn. At the board's September meeting, we presented the O'Donnell Learn Agreement for Award, which was approved by the board, and at that time, we had shared that the intent was to bring the MPS agreement to the board at today's meeting. So we are happy to report, we have now reached agreement on contract terms with MPS, and we are presenting the agreement to the board for review and approval today. The agreement is for one year, and the total value is for up to $290,000, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from our board members? I see Vice President Costa's hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just wondering, now that we're entering these contracts, which I think are really exciting, when can we kind of anticipate there being, you know, the product basically of this contract and the partnership with our staff?
Sure. So I'm happy to accept, and then if anyone else wants to add to that. So of course, we'll go through the process of signing them and then do the kickoff meeting, but we will in, probably in the 2022, I guess, fifth, I guess, calendar year, because that'll cross our fiscal and academic years, is when we would start engaging with that. We will start the work with them, but then working on the new, most likely on our new courses and pathways, though there may be some work that we would scope together as we work with our faculty, academics, and others, as there, you know, updates to existing programs that require instructional design support, they would be able to participate in that as well. But when we scope toward new ones, I would imagine in, we'd start to see this in early 2022.
I don't see any other hands. Would you, I just, I want to add, I want to make certain I, I understood Amy's question. I just want to make certain I understood your answer, and that is that the work will, the, the actual work will probably begin in the early part of 2022, but, and the, the beginning, the design and the discussions, can you give us an idea of the timeframe for an end product? Will that be toward the, well, can that be, can it be accomplished by sometime in 2022? Or, okay, that's what I-
Yes, definitely. And just to be clear, I think we'll have kickoff meetings that are in 2021, but given that we're close to the end of that, and, you know, we, we need our signed contracts and stuff, I think we'll have some kickoff meetings coming up probably in November and December, but then scoping out the work for each one, and then as we release new courses or pathways in 2022, we anticipate that these partners would be a part of that process.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification for me, anyway. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from my colleagues on the board? I don't see any other hands raised. Is there any public comment?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Then can I get a motion to approve?
So I'm the designated mover and second.
And you're a mover and a shaker, Tom. So we have it moved by Epstein. Can I get a second?
Second by Rawlings.
Second by Rawlings, thank you, Member Rawlings. Roll call, please.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Haines.
Thank you so much. And moving on to our last action item is 4.5, which is the AB 361 Resolution to reconsider the circumstances of the state of emergency and authorize remote teleconference meetings. And we have Cynthia Smith, our legal counsel, presenting this item.
Thank you, President Haines and Vice President Costa, members of the Executive Committee. Resolution 2021-09 is a continuation of Calbright's obligations under AB 361 regarding holding its meetings via teleconference as a result of the COVID-19 and state of emergency. At the special meeting of the Executive Committee on October 12th, 2021, the Executive Committee adopted Resolution 2021-07, which made findings that it, that as a result of the continuing state of emergency due to COVID-19, meeting in person would present imminent risks to the health and safety of attendees. AB 361 also requires local agencies to, local agency boards to reconsider every 30 days their circumstances of the state of emergency, and whether it continues to directly impact the ability of members and attendees to be in person. Resolution 2021-09 makes such findings, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Do any of the trustees have any questions on this item? I don't see any hands raised. Would that be correct, Terry?
That is correct, President Haines, and there is no public comment.
No public comment. So with that, I want everybody to jump in, and is there a motion on this item?
I'll move, I just want to be palm to the punch.
Thank you.
Second.
We have, we have a motion from Perry and a second from Epstein. We have, we have a motion from Perry and a second from Epstein. Can you please call the roll?
Amy Costa. Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
I.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
So did you get, did you get Vice President Costa's vote?
I did not. I was just going to ask again. Amy Costa.
I.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
All right. Thank you so much. We have completed our action agenda, and so we're now moving into information and reports. The first one is 5.1, which is the Calbright Salary Schedules and Guidance, and we have Mr. Bell, who's going to be presenting on this item.
Yes, thank you again, Madam President, Vice President, and Trustees. This this provides an update to the development of salary schedules and guidelines, I think alluded to a little bit earlier, for all non-faculty employees. Just as a reminder, this is non-faculty employees is because, of course, we're currently negotiating a three-year contract with the California Teachers Association, and we're in the process of recognizing, unit recognition for our classified employees with the California School Employees Association. So just to be clear about who we're talking about, where we're, that is who we're in the process of discussing here this this morning, or I guess we've we've kicked over into the afternoon now. This, this is the attached proposed salary schedules for the executive committee consideration are for unrepresented employees only, management, supervisory, and confidential employees. And we have the McKnight team here to go through the presentation for us. I hopefully I can. I haven't seen whether they're, they've come on board or not, but hopefully they're here to walk us through their presentation and and give us a sense of their their schedules and guideline presentation here for us this morning.
We are here, Jeff.
They are here. Thank you, Phil. I wanted to make sure that I heard a voice there. Otherwise, I was going to jump into the presentation.
Jeff, we're here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Very much, Phil. This is Phil McKnight. If you have not, I'm sure some of you have heard him before. If not, this is Phil. And Phil, please take a, take it away.
Sure. Appreciate it, Jeff. And good afternoon, everybody. And I appreciate you inviting us back. Again, as Jeff kind of mentioned, and I'll reiterate, is that we are covering the non-faculty models that we're presenting. These are simply models based off of our findings, and they include paid practice information and salary schedule models for right now, three employee groups that include the confidential executives and management slash administrators and academic administrators. Next slide, please. Again, just as I mentioned, so what we'll be covering is part of the market study. This is basically benchmark results, how we gathered our benchmark salaries and how we collected our pay practice information. Again, salary schedule models, we'll be presenting that at a later slide, and I will pass it off to Stan once we get down to the later portion of the slide deck, kind of just proposing some pay salary policies and some proposed guidelines. So the market study is based off of twenty California community college districts. We actually reviewed seventy or close to seventy California community colleges and districts. We then, of course, collected and compiled benchmark salary information from these twenty community college districts and identified salary step pay practice information. So on this slide, we came to a twenty, again, as mentioned in the previous slide, twenty California community colleges. I want to emphasize this is statewide. We're looking at a statewide talent pool. The methodology behind this was using several attributes that we used, including financial resources, geographic location, which kind of is just statewide, as I mentioned, and Carnegie class classification or institution type makeup. As discussed earlier, I will now present some models based off of our results that include confidential management administrators, academic administrators, and executive executives. We are we are just displaying two different options, and I'll get into that later. Go back to the peer comparison group. The pay philosophy is really an industry standard that we use when we gathered information from these twenty. So the benchmark salary information is at the fiftieth percentile or market median. Some of our other clientele, for example, set a higher pay philosophy, where they would like to be at the seventy-fifth, at the seventy-fifth or above, but to be consistent with to remain competitive but not excessive, for example, we have set the fiftieth percentile, assuming a fiftieth pay philosophy at the market median. Back, can you go back up to the previous slide? Thank you, Jeff. Again, the information we collected is common practice. So it's the the steps that you see here below, our pay practice collection of data represents what the average is for, which is six steps prior to longevity. We're not talking longevity right now. We're just talking what the salary schedule makeup is. And what we found is that there's commonly six steps, and the step advance, meaning from step one to step two and so forth, prior to longevity, is at four point seven seven percent. This was then applied to all salary schedules to remain fair and equitable across all employee groups. Now, moving forward, our plan based off of assigning incumbents to the appropriate step placement is we use our market information as backstops. And then we then assign based off of a combination of incumbent annual salaries and market information to the closest step within the appropriate range without loss of pay. These are, this is a model of the makeup of a confidential salary schedule. It has twenty ranges. And you may ask why we start at step or range C five. It's really just based off of optics from our experience. Nobody likes to be last on the totem pole, so to speak. So we're sensitive to that. In front of you, you have the management administrators and academic administrators salary schedule model. Again, the same step pay practice is applied to this salary schedule as well. Six ranges or six steps, twenty-one ranges, twenty ranges, excuse me. In front of you, you have the executive and leadership. I want to emphasize executive and leadership. So we included senior leadership and executives in this option A. And there is a step for each incumbent within the salary schedule. For option B, this is, I don't want to say placeholder, but again, a model. And below you will see what has been done commonly across some community college districts is that there's a negotiated contract to the board. There is a set min and max. I want to emphasize that. But this is just a model for if and when a performance management is implemented. So if there is a performance management program implemented, you can use that as a guide or a model. And I will now pass it on to Stan McKnight.
Before you do, we do have a hand raised on your, on your part of your presentation. Member calling Rawlings.
Thank you, President Haynes. Just wondering, so we have the step set at four point seven seven percent. And so I have two, two questions. One is, why four point seven seven rather than kind of around predictable number? But the second is, what are the ranges set at? Are they at one percent or different? How are those? And I may have a follow-up on some of this.
So the first part to your question is the reason why it's not rounded up is I, for Jeff's sake, that point zero three percent actually comes into a play as a cost factor. So without going into too much detail, there is going to be some cost analysis and implementation that comes part of this, and every little percent can count, for example. Can you repeat your second question?
What are the difference in ranges set at?
So it's really, we have the analysis for what is commonly done with the different ranges, but what is more commonly done is the the step percentage. So it just incrementally goes increase, and you'll see that there's a mirroring image from step to step within those ranges, for example. Step two, range one would be step one, range two. But it's really across the board at a four point seven seven percent incremental increase.
Got it. I see what you're doing there with the with the range kind of going along with the next step. It's a little bit than what I expected, but that that's all right. And so getting into the methodology on the four point seven seven, was that something we already established? Or because I'm wondering, four point seven seven versus four point seven five, those kind of things? It kind of what what developed that that range difference or the, you know, the step difference?
So what I, what I presenting, these are just models from what I've gathered from those twenty community college peer districts, and I took the median, which was all of the twenty California community colleges pay practice step increase, and I just gathered and collected the median average. I have a range, and so I took the median, which is that four point seven seven number figure.
Got it. And just for clarification, so you went through and you did the comparative analysis, the market study, brought it back. Did you use that to set the the salary schedule first, and then you did a review of the the placement of positions on the schedule? Or did you do a market analysis of the positions we have and then built the salary schedule around that? What was kind of the ordering of this?
So the 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 process here was really gathering pay practice information. And then what we wanted to, of course, ensure is that moving forward in 2023, this isn't going to really apply to Calbright, but it may, it has to start above the minimum wage, obviously. So the minimum wage could really be the starting or what derived from this salary schedule. Then we went out to market benchmark salaries, use those as backstops to assign appropriate steps within these ranges for the incumbents at Calbright.
So we're, we're not in a position where we're having to like wire rate anyone or anything like that? Is that what I'm understanding?
I would say we're not in any position right now. This is just the update on the analysis conducted. So I think in the future, there will be several decision points for board to make. And we can, you know, we can reflect that in sort of different scenarios and analyses for the classified staff. That'll happen through bargaining for the faculty that will happen through bargaining.
Yeah.
Relative to the different salary schedules. So I just want to
Yeah.
kind of point of emphasis. We are not implementing anything at this point yet. This is pre-decisional.
Yeah, we're just presenting models based off of common practice. I mean, that's pretty much the simplest way to look at it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The last question I'll have is, if I'm not mistaken, the Affordable Care Act has provisions regarding salaries for being exempt organization. And was that something you took a look at as well or no?
In terms of exemption determination and status, that is on our last slide as next steps. So we will be looking at FLSA guidelines and making determinations moving forward.
Very good. Appreciate your work. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
So I do have a question. So both you and Bill were talking inside baseball. And and so I I'm outside baseball. And so can you explain for me, you? I see here that at at every at that you have, you have a range and then you have steps. And and so when, when you go down a step, it's, it's, it's a, 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 an amount. But if you were to go over into the second range, it would be the level of a step of a, of a, of the second step, I guess, or however you frame it. So it's the same amount. And so explain to me why that's important. From, from the, the, the point, I guess, of the, the person who is going down a step, you're getting some money if you go across a step. But if you, it almost means that you have to go, go down. If you're, if you're going across, you would be getting an increase. You wouldn't be going up to the first step again. Or that, the, the step that you were at.
Right.
So explain, explain it in layman's terms, what, what's, what's, what's happening there and why it, why that's important?
So it it comes back to policies and guidelines a little bit, but for reclassification purposes, typically, if an incumbent, and you're asking Pam, I'm sorry, if if one position moves up a range, why is it just moving kind of unilaterally but backwards? That that is, won't be the case, because if you reclassify into a new pay grade.
Okay, I didn't hear the clap, the reclassification of of that. I was just thinking of of those who, by virtue of time in a classification, then moves over, but the moving over really means that it, something's, something has changed in in the job. Am I correct about that?
By range. Now, by range, by step, it would be longevity. Because this is, this is a very traditional salary schedule model.
Right. I I understand that piece, but I was trying to figure out, I'd never looked at, I'd, I'd never looked at the, the, the amounts in the next in the next step, the next step over, or the reasoning for that. So anyway, thank you. Are there any, are there any other questions before we move on? Seeing no hands, hearing no, yes, there is, then you can continue your presentation. Thank you.
Stan McKnight will be covering the proposed guidelines. Stan?
Yes. And of course, what we provided you is a salary structure. That salary structure must be administered. And so we have developed some model guidelines surrounding that, which we're not presenting to you for approval today. We're presenting to you for information. We have some additional work to be done. We'll talk about that in next steps. But let's go ahead with the slide. First, thank you. So we have drafted a, basically a policy that links compensation plans of the college to its unique mission and, and of course, the availability of funds. And for this purpose, we have looked at the twenty-odd colleges that were, that we structured the salary schedule from to see what their guidelines were, and also applied some viewpoint from our own experience and practice in administering salaries, so linking them to the academic mission and the availability of funds. We also, as Phil has mentioned, the structure is a salary range and step structure. So the salary range is a minimum to maximum for which the job classification is assigned. And the advancement to that, through that range is a series of six steps as we've modeled them. And for the employee, and they advance on the basis of service. Now, at some future time, the college may want to consider performance management as a factor for advancement. But we're not at that place in time for the college. And so we're recommending a traditional approach, which would be advancement from one step to the next, based upon service on an annual basis. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. The exception, and of course, the, the board would be charging the president and the president's staff to carry out the policies. But those policies would be subject to guidelines approved by the board and also any collective bargaining agreements that are approved by the board. Okay, so right now we're talking about those units for which we do not have bargaining underway. So move forward, Phil, or whoever's controlling this. Thank you. Each salary range has a minimum and a maximum salary to it. And then the steps that connect the minimum to the maximum, as I mentioned earlier, are six steps. And they range from minimum to maximum for each salary range. There is a hiring range available because the normal starting rate on a step salary system is step one. The goal of a step system is based upon service is to get to the maximum of the step, which is step six. And you gain that over a period of years. But there is a difference sometimes between the qualifications of new hires that need to be taken into consideration. The minimum step is based upon the minimum requirements as described in the job classification description. And it is what we advertise when we are, are looking for new candidates. But there may be candidates that have exceptional qualifications. And so in the guidelines, we're recommending, based again upon our observation of the, of other colleges and universities we've worked with and the 20 colleges we benchmark. There is a range of step one to step three. Anything above that step would certainly require not only the approval of the president, but if we change the range, it might require the approval of the, of the board as well. Salary advancement after hire is one step annually until they reach the maximum of the step of the range. Once the maximum step in the range has been met, there is no salary advancement beyond that point. And the salary maximums cannot be exceeded without, with, as we recommended it, without review of the board. Okay. And that's important because CalPERS, for example, only, only counts wages that are earned within an approved, a board approved salary range. So that's important. Let's move forward to the next slide, please. Besides just hiring and advancement, there are a number of circumstances that apply that we need guidelines for. One is what happens when there is a promotion? And we would define a promotion as a move from one salary grade to a next higher salary grade. That can occur because the incumbent has competed for a job in a higher salary range. Or it can occur because we have reclassified the entire job classification to a different salary range. But when that occurs, what do you do? So we have attempted to define an adjustment for promotions. There's also the opportunity for the administration to consider advanced hiring rates. Let's say, for example, we have a job that's been assigned to a particular salary range. But through a period of recruitment, the market has changed. And we're not able to hire people and at the starting's minimum step of that range. Let's say, for example, it's a high technology position for which there's a lot of job competition for. The college has a choice of either coming back to the board and asking that the job be reclassified to a higher salary range. Or it can expediently advance the hiring range to a higher step within that range. And that would require the president's approval and ultimately a review by the board. And we call that advanced hiring rates. Those are rare. We don't expect them to happen often. But it can happen in a hot market. And we're after, we're after talented people. So we're trying to put flexibility in the, in the, in the structure here a little bit. If an employee is assigned a position outside of their job classification, which is normal, what happens there? And so we've attempted to define out of class, temporary out of class for that. And it basically the promotion policy would apply. Change of position or transfer. If a individual changes to another position in the same salary range, there would be no salary adjustment. If they change to a different salary range, there might be an adjustment appropriate. And so we've allowed for that in our guidelines. Pay upon return from leave without pay. What happens there? They come back to the same step in the same salary range they left. Pay upon re, uh, reemployment. They terminate. A year later, come back to us and want, uh, uh, come back to work for us. How do we treat that? And it depends upon whether they're coming back in the same classification or a higher classification. But we attempted to define that. Reclassification and reorganization adjustments. We were providing a model description for that as well. And we're also providing an opportunity for employees to have their pay reviewed in, in the event that there is an honest error that they believe has occurred in their pay. If that occurs, we would want that to be done immediately and brought immediately to the attention of the administration. So corrections can be made. On the other hand, if there's a request to change to a different job classification or to a different pay level, we will collect those on an, and we recommend collecting those on an annual basis and reviewing them at one time. And then factoring that into your budget plans for the following year. And many of our colleges in California have that process and procedure in place. Next slide. After we have approval on, or, or probably pending approval of the guidelines and the salary schedules, we need to go out, we need to do a cost step analysis. In other words, if, as Phil suggested, the model is that we have a series of, of six steps per salary range. And we assign employees to those steps. The first thing we would do would be to assign employees to the nearest step that meets, it meets their current salary without loss of pay. The key is without loss of pay. So if the step turns out to be slightly higher than their current pay, there's a gap there and we want to calculate that for you. And Jeff wants to make sure he has good information as part of his budget process for that as well. So the next step is to go through a cost evaluation. We also need to have, and I, the slide says approval by CalPERS for our salary schedules. But really, I think it's more of a review because the approval is the governing board. Okay. And you are the governing board. So we'll go through a review process with CalPERS on both the salary schedule and also the model guidelines, which is why the model guidelines are not in front of you today for approval. They, we need to, we need to go through that step as well, just to make, we believe we're in compliance. But we don't want any surprises after the board has, has approved the, the, the salary schedule and, and the policies. Beyond that, beyond your approval, there is another phase that we intend to undertake right away. The college has been in place for a couple of years now and operating with job descriptions that were originated for positions that we originally hired people into. We've had more experience now with the, with the workforce and the needs of the workforce and how jobs really relate to a, a, a position. We want to make sure that we're up to date on that. So we want to collect and review job descriptions and make sure they are current and up to date as we go, go into implementation of these very important salary programs. We want to have an, this is an opportunity to review job titles at the same time to make sure that they're appropriate. For new jobs that are coming in, we want to introduce job evaluation methodology. So that we're not actually having to go to and study the market for each and every position. We're able to evaluate jobs. And so for new budgeted positions, we'll go through a job evaluation step for that. Bill, earlier you asked a question about exempt status. That's when we're going to study it. We'll be looking to see whether or not we have jobs appropriately classified for overtime or not. And it, just on a quick review, it looks like we're pretty in, in compliance, generally in compliance. There may be a few positions you're a little suspect of. But in any case, we'll do a comprehensive review to make sure that we have jobs appropriately classified for overtime pay. At the end of this, there may need to be a few realignments because we've updated the job description, so forth. If there, we don't expect many, but if there are some realignments, we'll identify those and they'll become a part of your next budget process. So in a nutshell, that's the next steps and the next phase. And I believe we're ready for questions and answers. Further questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. I don't have, oh, there we are, all of us back together. Are there any questions from my colleagues on the board? I don't see any hands raised. Thank you much. Thank you so much for that presentation. We're going to move on then to our next item, which is 5.2, which is a review and discussion of the draft Board of Trustees and Executive Committee meeting scheduled for 2022. Our chief of staff was supposed to do this presentation, but she is out sick. So we're going to have our CEO do, do the presentation.
Hopefully this is fairly straightforward. We are recommending, wanted to facilitate discussion and review of a draft Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting schedule for 2022. As you know, each fall, the board adopts a schedule of Board of Trustees meetings, and we try to coincide them with the Board of Governors meeting schedules for efficiency purposes. We are seeking to align with that. The, the full board generally meets on Mondays and Tuesdays or Tuesday of every other month, starting in January. Executive Committee, usually the third week of the months when the Board of Trustees does not meet. And the tentative schedule is being presented for discussion and will be presented for full adoption at the November 16th meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you for that. It's my understanding that all of my colleagues got a copy of this ahead of time. And it, and the, 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 the reason for that was to, for us to be able to look at our calendars to ensure that, well, we're, we are able to, to meet in particular on the dates and at the times that are noted in, in this draft. So with, with that, do we have any questions that are coming, that, that our board members have regarding the schedule? Are there any changes that are necessary or at least to be discussed? I don't, well, I don't see anybody but you, Ajita. So can someone, is, is, I don't see any hands raised now that I can see everyone. So everyone is, is, is good with this. The, I did ask our board liaison, at some point, we will be going back to, back to in-person meetings. So one, I wanted to make certain that we're still okay with, ultimately with the 11 AM to 2 PM. Part of that was our Southern California folks who, if we, if we tried to make them come for a nine o'clock meeting, they'd have to get on the road about 6 AM to get to Pasadena, probably. So that, that's one of the reasons for that particular timeframe. And then I also want to make certain that as we consider going back, we should, we show Pasadena City College Foundation as one of the locations. And if indeed we still have some sorts of restrictions during that time, we need to make certain that, that we are able to meet those, those meeting, we, that we are aware of what those meeting restrictions may be when they're in person. And make certain that we are aware and that we're following them in the location and in the county that we are cited in. So.
Yes, and I'll, I'll just mention, we are tracking those developments very carefully. So we are prepared to transition to in-person meetings. And that, and that will likely require some protocol adjustment to the way that we have done things when we were in person in the past. Understandably so, but, but respectfully take this suggestion and for the board executive committee's awareness, we are, we are definitely tracking that closely.
I appreciate that. And this doesn't require an action at this, at this particular meeting. It was just an information item, just to make certain that we're all on the same page relative to dates, times and locations. And so with that, and no questions, we're going to move on to, to 5.3, which is our reports on contracts and purchases. Mr. Bell, it's your show again.
Yes, Madam President, Vice President and Trustees, thank you very much. Just very briefly, we have 20 new, I'm sorry, 20 contracts to report on. 12 of them are new, seven are extensions and one's an amendment. And then on the, on the area of purchases in September, just about 32,000 to report on. The highest area again is, is, is not a surprise is other operating expenses. Digital is the highest area of contract expenditure or purchase expenditures in that area, as you might expect. Nothing significant, other, other significant areas to report on for you in that area, Madam President.
All right, let's check with our members in case they have questions regarding the purchase in the, in the contracts. I don't see any hands raised at this point. So we're going to, so thank you very much for that. We're now going to go to constituency reports. Oh, are there any, I should have asked for any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
And I can't, did, did we ask, did I ask for a public comment on item 5.1? I don't think I did.
But there was not, and I didn't interrupt you.
You, you catch me when, when, when there is. Okay, I appreciate that. And are there any public comment for 5.3?
No, there was no public comment, President Haynes.
Perfect. Then we, we will then go to constituency group reports. We're going to start with the Calbright Academic Senate report. And I think that it is Michael Stewart, who is president of the Calbright Academic Senate presenting. Oh, he says, oh, sorry.
There's no report.
No report. Sorry about that. And then therefore we're going to go to 6.2, Calbright Faculty Association report. I see that there is a presenter and that's Ashley Odell from, who is president of the Faculty Association.
Thank you, President Haynes. Hello, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and esteemed members of the board. I am excited to be here to present on behalf of the Calbright Faculty Association. So with the approval and implementation of the MOU, thank you, board for approving that. We have been able to move into collaborative and important process of bargaining. We have been able to move into collaborative and important process of bargaining our inaugural comprehensive faculty contract. And that is the subject of my report today. We are happy to report that our hard-working bargaining team sat down on October eighteenth to work on the collective bargaining agreement and were able to complete many important items, including updating the faculty evaluation form, updating the student experience survey, which is related to faculty evaluation, and starting to discuss parameters around special projects and stipends. So we are moving forward in in a collaborative nature, which we're excited about. We have two dates scheduled in early November, on the first and the fifth, in which we hope to discuss preliminary salary schedule data and rationale. And then we look forward to many more further meetings with the Cal-Bright Administration to establish mutually agreeable terms for the many articles included in the faculty contract. So very happy about that. And a quick note, if if I, if I may be so bold, is to just share that we are enthusiastic and supportive of the initial steps to be taken in the establishment of Cal-Bright Chapter fifty-three of the California School Employees Association. So we're just excited to 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 acknowledge that. And that's it for me today. Thank you so much for your time, and and we're very excited about about this movement forward with our, with our organization and and Cal-Bright College.
Well, we are too. So, and thank you so much for that presentation. So is there? Isn't, I don't see any questions that our board members may have. So we're gonna go to the public forum. And are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
President Haynes, there are no raised hands or any questions whatsoever.
Well, that's that's, that's good, I think, which means that we're at the end of our agenda. And and so the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can now adjourn. And it's only, it's twelve fifty-one, folks. So thank you so much for your time and consideration. The meeting's now adjourned. Bye.
Thank you.